Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Landlord-Tenant Ad Hoc Committee, the meeting of June 1st, 2022, starting at 5:38 PM. Madam Clerk, my name is Peter Zovek. I'll be acting as the facilitator tonight for one night only. And can we have the roll call, please?
Committee member Berthlet?
Here.
Committee member Grigorian?
I'm here.
Committee member Hyer-Petian?
Here.
Committee member Marchand?
Here.
Committee member Saun?
Here.
Committee member Tavanyan?
Here.
Committee members Zargaria?
Absent.
Okay. We'll move on to item two, which is the regular business agenda and report from the city clerk.
The agenda for the June 1st, 2022 special meeting of the Tenant-Landlord Ad Hoc Committee was posted on May 26, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes, and these are the minutes of the April 27, 2022, Landlord-Tenant Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second?
A second.
Second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With that, the minutes will stand approved. Next on the agenda, we have oral communications, and we do have one speaker under oral communications present, and that would be Herbert Milano. Discussion is limited to items not listed on the agenda. Committee members may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Staff may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation report, and each speaker will have two minutes.
I'd like to address the chair. See if I can have three minutes, please.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. I believe that this committee is an essential committee for the City of Glendale and that the tasks that you have before you give you a significant number of opportunities. If you're asking the right questions and if you come to this committee without any ideology or if you come to this committee without any preconceived notions of what is right and what is wrong, I think that the committee may have an excellent chance of finding new ways of solving the problem that is not Glendale's only, it's LA County's statewide. Twenty years ago, I was the president of the Glendale Apartment Association. It was formed as a result of actions by the city council in the year 2020, and we managed to handle a lot of the different problems that occurred within landlords and tenants, and we came up with elegant solutions to the problems. One of them was the 1212 program. Since then, I have also been executive director for the Apartment Association of Greater LA, the oldest apartment association in the nation, with tens of thousands of members. And as executive director, I was faced with a lot of the problems that you face in Glendale in other cities, in LA, Santa Monica, Culver City, West Hollywood, and elsewhere. So I come to you with a significant amount of experience. I was also a board member, and I've been a landlord for over 34 years right here in Glendale. And by the way, since that time, I have never evicted a single tenant. So just so that you know. I'd like to address today the issue of the rent registry, because it was mentioned about half a dozen times at the last meeting. It has been repeatedly presented to you as a potential solution, and I think I know who's driving this particular idea. It is a potential source of information, but I'd like to propose to you that the same information could possibly be obtained through random sampling. You know, we have a skill set out there from statistics that allows us to sample at random enough information to be able to gather sufficient information for the decisions that wish to be made. When I have asked in the past of council members who proposed it, what is the rationale and the objectives and the decisions that will be made? Oftentimes, I got very vague answers, right? Let's gather the data and let's see what we can find, without really understanding all the problems and potential problems that may exist and the mischief that can occur. I'd like to perhaps address that in a more thorough presentation to you, and I'd like to offer a presentation of 20 to 30 minutes on my experience for the last, oh my God, it's almost 40 years since I've been a landlord, as well as an active participant in landlord-tenant issues. I understand the issues that have been presented before the state of California. I have gone to the state legislature and advocated for certain changes. Recently, I talked to Assemblymember Laura Friedman about it. May I continue?
Time.
I want to wrap it up. And I would like to be able to address issues of the sort that I discussed with her and others in the assembly with regard to potential solutions that this committee should handle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Do we have any call-ins?
No.
Call-ins?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and it's business agenda. There are three items on tonight's agenda. First, at 5:00 a.m., is a brief overview of AB 1482, which is the state rent control law. I believe at the last meeting, there were a couple of questions about that and wanted to provide a brief overview of that. Item 5B is discussion of possible changes to the rental rights program, and then item 5C is discussion of rescheduling the June 22, 2022 meeting. So with that, we will kick off with item 5A, a brief overview of AB 1482, and with that, we'll go to our senior housing analyst, Sipon Zadorian, and he will be taking you through a short PowerPoint.
Good afternoon, committee members. As Peter Zovek said, I'm going to go through AB 1482 very briefly. This ordinance is also known as the Tenant Protection Act of 2019. So, the AB 1482 does a couple of basic things. It sets a cap for all rents in the state based on a local CPI plus 5%. The law was, law took effect January 1st, 2020, and is set to sunset January 1st, 2030. So about eight more years left before it expires. Like I said, the main thing is that it sets a rent cap for all properties in California, 5% plus CPI, and we'll discuss what local CPI is in a second. It's 5% CPI or whichever is lower, and also establishes statewide eviction protections. So the current CPI or current cap is 8.6% because the CPI is 3.6%. You can see in this chart, this is the CPI released from 2021 and recent CPI in 2022. The current April CPI, which is what's used in AB 1482, is 7.9%. So the CPI they use is from April to April, so April 2021 to April 2022, and that change in CPI is 7.9% this year. So that's what they're going to be using, 5% plus 7.9%, which is above 10%, so they'll have to use the 10% cap that's set in place. The year before, it was 3.6%. That's why the current CPI is eight, or current cap is 8.6% because the April CPI last year was 3.6%. The current one's 7.9%, and landlords can start using that effect of August. Again, to go through it, 5% plus local CPI, local CPI is 7.9%, that equals 12.9%. But since the ordinance says it's either 10% or less, go with the 10%, so not the 12.9%. So the new cap in Glendale effect of August will be 10%. And here's a chart showing when to use which percentage depending on what month you're increasing the rents. So up until July 31, 2022, you'll still be using the 8.6%, and then effect of August, it's 10%. And then we don't know what next year is, so question mark there. And then these are some exemptions for AB 1482. AB 1482 exempts buildings built within the last 15 years, and it's a rolling number. So next year, this year, 2007 and beyond, next year will be 2008, and then year after, 2009, and so on. So it's a rolling 15 years. It's not set 15 years. And then any deed restricted properties, two-unit properties where the property owner does not live on the unit, and the single-family homes that are owned by real estate trust, a corporation, RLC, and the landlord must also submit in writing that the property is exempt or otherwise it's not exempt. And again, single families. Any questions?
Any questions for Sipon? Sipon, then, you had stated that the, so you can certainly give notice before August 1st of the increase using the 10%?
Right. Just effect of August 1st is when you can actually increase it by 10%. So you can give the notice prior to August for it to be effective August 1st.
I see.
How many days of notice do you need to give them?
30 days.
30 days?
Unless you're on a specific program like Section 8, which requires 60 days, I believe, or if it's an affordable housing project, different projects have different requirements, but typically, regular tenants, 30 days.
I have a question. Why do we need to do that now when they increase every month or every time that we have an increase, we need to disclosure? But before, it wasn't like that.
In regards to disclosing what exactly?
Yeah, the percentage that they are, they are allowed to increase.
Are you asking if it needs to be addressed in the notice?
Yeah, because that incentive, the landlord, that they don't have any idea that this is going on to increase even they don't think about it. I mean, we need to have this kind of information, I believe, so when they are trying to ask what is going on, what is the new percentage or whatever, but not like...
Are you saying that we should require the landlord to show the percentage that they're allowed to increase on the notice?
Because this is by LA, right?
This is by the state.
Estate. Estate. And then it doesn't apply to us. I mean, it's by estate, but it doesn't apply to the current time. I don't know, we need to...
No, this applies statewide unless you have a more...
Okay. The same way that SB 9 and SB 10 is something negative for the city, citizens are complaining, highly complaining about this. I just want to raise the voice about tenants. This is too much, 10%.
Right. 10% is too much of an increase? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I see. Well, unfortunately, it's adopted state law, and it's in place until 2030, so...
Yeah, but as we...
The formula is, I'm sorry, but the formula is the 5% plus CPI. In this particular case, CPI takes it up to the 10% maximum. You know, last year or this current year, it was only 7.9%.
I understand the numbers. I understand the increase. My concern is that the same way that other cities took action against SB 9 and SB 10, I guess, I'm thinking about, because I'm a renter too, I'm thinking about the impact that is going to be this 10%.
I'm not quite sure if this is something that we can discuss or decide, because that's a state law. It's all over the state, and we should, if we are concerned about this, and I'm sure you have a very valid reason to be concerned about, we should raise this with our representatives in Sacramento. It is not in the privacy of this commission to be able to override a state law.
That's what I'm saying, sir. SB 9 and SB 10 has been already, other cities that are against that, they start already a lawsuit against the state. I don't know if you're...
Again, that's fine.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to see, I'm just trying to express through the same way that they are expressing the increase, I'm just trying to say about how much the impact is going to be about the tenants, too. Don't take it as easy as, you know, if they say that, we're just going to follow. We need to see all the areas. Thank you.
Comment is noted. And then, Sipon, for cities that already have an established rent control program, are they subject to AB 1482 or are they exempt from it?
They're completely exempt. So if, for example, LA County has their own rent control, ALCD has their own rent control, AB 1482 does not apply to them because they already have their rent control and it's stronger than the state rent control. Even properties that are exempt in that those jurisdictions still are exempt from AB 1482. So it's a catch-all. They don't pick and choose.
Is it also the cities that enacted their own rent control after AB 1482, like Culver City and, you know, some...
I believe if it's stronger, there's a list of criteria that you have to meet for you to be exempt, so if they meet that criteria, then they're exempt.
Regardless of whether it was in place prior to the state adopting the law or after?
I believe so. It's in the ordinance. I can't exactly remember the date, but there is a list of criteria that you have to meet to be exempt in exempt city.
I'm not quite sure if cities can override a state law, so maybe the city attorney's office can clarify that for us.
Members of the committee, it depends. I think in this particular instance, the state law anticipated that cities could potentially regulate this area, the law themselves. So I think that's what Mr. Zadorian is referencing. But generally, you're correct. If the state has regulated in a particular area, then the cities are preempted from also regulating there. But in this particular instance, there's a specific discussion in state law that allows for cities to regulate directly.
I see. Thank you.
As far as our roles are concerned here with this committee, what can we do? Because again, our task is to provide the city council with some ideas and some suggestions for them to consider. Back in 2000, when we enacted the Just Cause Ordinance, or around 2000, there were certain things that obviously we didn't have the current state of the state law where it is right now. So there was no AB 1482. There was no 1946.1. So there have been changes. And then with the ordinance that was prepared in 2019, I also think that that was done not anticipating what was going to happen with AB 1482. I think that one of the things that I would encourage our council to do is to visit the ability to harmonize the city's ordinance with that which the state has, because everybody wants to take a position, and again, based on the way that the law works, the state takes control. The city, obviously, is allowed by state law if they have more restrictive measures, which the city thinks is more in protection of its tenants or its occupants, then they can legislate accordingly. There's really two monkeys in this room as far as this whole issue is concerned. The first one is, what is the rent percent increase? Let's call it what it is. That's the first big item. And then there's the other item, which is everything else that has to deal with tenancies. AB 1482 talks about rent increase, and it talks about other items. There are landlords and tenants here that are concerned with people that are disruptive. It has nothing to do with the rent increases or the rent percentages. I think what we should do, because there's, with the current agenda that we have, to also talk about our ordinance that we have right now, there should be provisions with renewals and things like that, so that we can harmonize the two laws, so that there isn't a separate set. If the city believes that there has to be a strict rent cap, and currently in Glendale it's 7%, if the city wants to legislate that, then that's obviously clear and state law allows for it. But I think we should encourage our council to harmonize these two languages, because we need to update as updates come along. And by doing that, we, because, you know, AB 1482 involves 1946.2, 1947.12, 1947.13. So the people that are watching this, I don't want there to be some misguided interpretation that this was only a rent percentage on CPI. There was also other protections that were afforded to tenants. So for instance, with the state now, you have just cause requirements for certain types of tenancies. That's also important, because we have similar items here with our City of Glendale ordinance. There's also other allowances for relocation. We have a different formula than the state does. I guarantee you, once the state's formula is more than the city, someone's going to say, "They've got to pay me more," because that's what the state says. And if the city's is more, they're going to say, "I got to pay, they got to pay more" based on the city. Landlords are going to take the opposite position. So I think by harmonizing even things like relocation payments, the city, for instance, in our ordinance, has language that says that any relocation due to demolition requires that the permit be presented at the time of the notice. The state law does not require that a permit be provided, but the standards are similar.
I'm going to interrupt you only because you're anticipating Agenda Item B. That will be the entirety of the discussion, which is looking at the various sections of the current Just Cause eviction ordinance, and then not just harmonizing, because it may be that what the state law identifies doesn't fit with the City of Glendale, but looking at the City of Glendale's rental rights program and going through it step by step and seeing where this committee could make recommendations.
I agree. I agree, and I think they should have actually almost joined these two items on the agenda, because in some ways, they're inseparable.
It's important to have the background of AB 1482, but then also go step by step, and you'll see Mr. Zadorian go through the PowerPoint that breaks down the rental rights program. And then to your question with regard to some additional changes that may not be currently in your purview, we did explore the possibility of the committee offering suggestions that isn't within the scope, and the recommendation was to do that at the end of the program, at the end of the process. Once we've had an opportunity to fulfill those areas that were specifically called out for by council, at the end, and then we plan to provide a status update to the city council, at the end of that, then we will be in a position to incorporate potentially other changes that aren't within the scope by way of a request to city council to see if they're interested at that point to hear other ideas that isn't currently within the scope.
Right, but when we're talking about AB 1482, other than just getting a dissertation of what the law basically provides, what are we able to do sitting here today with respect to that?
Well, you were talking about harmonizing with regard to the rental rights program. When we start discussing, for example, the relocation, as you mentioned, that is certainly one where staff also feels that there should be some changes there. It may not be exactly what you're thinking about, but that would be your opportunity to share your ideas, so that we can incorporate all of them. Maybe we'll have agreement, and if we don't, we'll produce multiple ideas to city council about which way they, which options they can consider when making changes to that specific area of just cause. That sound, then makes sense to you? That doesn't make sense to you?
My whole point is, is obviously this committee is formed based on our individual experiences to comment and make suggestions to the city council.
Right.
And so if we're gonna be here, obviously, it's different to just say, this is what the state law is. And, because we can't touch that, neither can the city council. Then the next question becomes, how can we make it better in this city for everybody? Obviously, with the rental rights program that we have, and what is the official name of the title of that act, by the way? Because everyone's, I've heard it referred to in different ways, so I'd like to get a...
It started with a just cause for eviction, and then ultimately, it was modified. It added some additional requirements, and now we refer to it as the Rental Rights Program.
Let's move on to the next item, and there is a wider discussion in there.
Sure. We'll go ahead.
Was there a question, Ms. Bertollet?
I had a question, which is a little bit specific, but the extension, I just thought maybe we should mention the extension of the LA County Emergency Eviction Moratorium, and how that affects Glendale. Because it's my understanding that that does affect Glendale through the end of, I think, this year into next year. And I just didn't know if anybody was aware of that, or if you could clarify.
The position of the city attorney's office, our position is that we do not enforce the county ordinance, but certainly, it applies to individuals who reside within the City of Glendale. So it would be something that would be brought up in the form of either an affirmative defense or some other way through the eviction process.
If I may ask, however, Glendale is in LA County, and if, let's say, a landlord brings an eviction case against a tenant, that case has to be heard in a superior court, and that way, the superior court is following which rule? The, you know, it's very confusing, and Commissioner Rappetian is correct that most of these things have to be clarified, because the tenants need to know where they are, and the landlords need to know where they are.
Well, certainly, there's a lot of layers, right? We're working with the city ordinances. We're trying to navigate through state law as well, and then the COVID protections that are there through the county. So I think what we're looking at is the more permanent rental rights program that's within the City of Glendale. And so that's what we're, that's what this committee is charged with doing. Some of it requires harmonizing with state law. Some of it requires offering more restrictive requirements. But that's essentially what we're looking at. The COVID protections that relate, the moratorium or the protections that are offered through the county would be applied through the court system. They would not be enforced through this, through the City of Glendale.
Okay. Any other questions?
If there are no more questions on Item A, we could move on to Item B, where we're, I think, looking to get right into the meat of the discussion. And I don't know how you want to present. Is it, do you want to, you want to go through each section? I think the way we would anticipated, offering the, you know, sort of rolling out the this particular section, because you've heard about just cause, rental rights program, the relocation, you've heard about all of it. At this point, I think we want to break it down to individual sections. And if you've had an opportunity to study it, and if you have some ideas about how we could make changes, either to that specific section, let's say it's a particular word in the definition that doesn't, that's causing confusion, or an entire section just doesn't seem to flow in the, in your everyday practice, then we want to break it down and have that conversation now. And then we'll be taking notes and trying to harmonize, I think that's a good word that we've been using today, trying to make sure that all of the viewpoints are reflected, and if there is agreement, we will incorporate that. If we don't have agreement, then we will try to capture the different ideas, and then ultimately bring it back. But we'll all have to agree on certain sections for us to make it a recommendation to city council. If there isn't complete agreement, then we will break it up in the form of, these were the two ideas that were being advocated by committee members. And then if there's an actual vote, and the vote reflects, say, a four to three vote, we will also include that.
Before we start, if we could have the record reflect that Commissioner Zagarian is present. And then, as Ms. Rappetian stated, the review by the committee of the rental rights program is one of the, one of the three duties that the city council had assigned to this committee. And as Seepan's going to walk us through, you previously received an overview of the rental rights program on all three elements of it. You were also sent in an email, the actual ordinance as well. And what you have before you are possible proposed discussion points of areas that staff has determined could use some tweaking one way or another. And then there are also some staff suggestions for certain of these categories as well, if the committee is interested in hearing them. And then, obviously, anything else that the committee might want, element, might want to bring up, we can go through that as...
And if we don't get through it in one meeting, that's okay, too.
Seepan?
All right. As Ms. Rappetian and Mrs. Zolak mentioned, we broke down the ordinance into general areas of discussion. We'll just start with one. If any of you have any suggestions, you can start the discussion. Staff had no suggestions in this area. It's a one-year written lease offerings. If you've reviewed it, if there's any areas that you think needs changing, specific to one-year written lease offerings, any suggestions you have? Go ahead.
I just have a quick suggestion that maybe, you know, continued outreach to tenants of their obligation to accept or reject this. We have a hard time getting responses quite often, and we have to kind of ask and ask, and it's a heavy workload sometimes, because the tenants, I think, don't know if they have to respond or not.
I believe after 14 days, it's an automatic denial, right? They don't respond.
Just one point of clarification. Are we going through this one by one, or you're going to present everything, and then we discuss overall?
I think it's easier if we discuss each point, rather than we present and then go back and discuss. So if you have any ideas specifically for one-year written lease offerings, if you want to change it?
If I may, I think that's a good business practice. I always do that. However, I think it's completely unnecessary, and it gives a lot of pressure and burden on both sides. The tenant has to absolutely answer in 14 days, and the landlord doesn't know what, how to respond and all that. I think a good landlord should really think about not having vacancies. And for that, it is just, he will have to offer that automatically. It doesn't have to be in a law, but if a landlord doesn't get along, let's say, with a tenant, for whatever reason, they don't have to continue that for a year. And again, of course, just cause, the landlord has to have other good reasons to ask the tenant to leave. I understand that. But to offer a one-year lease to somebody that they cannot get along, and then when they do, with all these little things that the ordinance has, it's totally unnecessary. But I tell you, I always offer one-year lease to my tenants, because that's, I believe, is a good practice.
Can we clarify, then, what was mentioned by Commissioner Bertollet, is that when a landlord makes an offer of a one-year lease, the tenant has how many days to respond?
14 days.
14 days. And if there's no response in 14 days?
For the one-year lease, it's a rejection.
It's considered a rejection. So the practices or the experience out in the field is that you're waiting at more than 14 days, and then...
Well, I guess we're really actually wanting them to affirm one way or the other. So I guess we, I know we could wait, but we're trying to get them to sign that, so we don't have misunderstandings later. And it seems like a lot of them are not aware of the 14 days. So one thing I was thinking of, just in general, for Glendale, would be, you know, maybe if there were one or two sort of, you know, RRP workshops every year, just to kind of keep refreshing for everyone, everyone's duties, and then maybe you wouldn't have so many people saying, I didn't know, and, you know, maybe if there were just sort of regular housing workshops or something, that could be helpful.
And every time I give them a notice of increase with an offer of one year, I always give them that 14 days with a time and date clearly in the letter to say that, please respond by this date. If you don't respond, then I, you know, consider you a month-to-month tenant. That's what I do, and I, again, I think because it's a good business practice. But that puts a lot of burden on me and my staff.
Is the tenant required to respond in writing or verbally, or?
I believe writing.
I think it says in writing.
Right.
With regards to the, to the lease offerings, a couple of issues. I still can't make sense, and maybe I'm missing something, the 14 days versus the 60-day requirement that we have here. And by the way, Ms. Rappetian, one of the things I also wanted to go back to, I noticed it wasn't on this, was the definitions. I have a couple of concerns with the definitions. I've gone through this thing. I've made a lot of notes. And it starts with the basics. I'm looking at this, with all due respect to my fellow members, but as an attorney who's done both landlord and tenant through jury trial and judge trial, so what do I potentially see coming up as an issue? You let me know when the appropriate time is to go into definitions, and we can do that. With respect to the lease offerings, the way it was originally enacted, I think, was it anticip, I mean, I'm just gonna start with 9.30.025. This was enacted back in 2019. I think it was done because of the concern that landlords were gonna be acting in haste and trying to raise increases right away. So in subsection B, it starts with mentioning the effective date of the ordinance enacting this chapter. So there's this first-time notice that seems to apply, and then there are all these other renewal notices that apply. Well, if it's a first time, my understanding is it's 14 days. But if it's a renewal, you have to give them 90 days, and then they have 60 days to respond. And if it's a renewal, and the tenant originally rejected the offer of a lease, you still have to keep giving them a written renewal right. This entire section of this ordinance has, I think, has to be scrapped and rewritten to make simple sense for the mom-and-pop landlord and the mom-and-pop tenant. Period. This is, it's, I can't follow it. I sit down, and the first question I'll ask is, is this your first renewal? What does that mean? Well, in the ordinance, it says there is, if this is the first time after this ordinance was enacted, I guarantee if we held a poll outside, most people won't even understand that language. So there is this, now they gotta go back and dig through their files and figure out, is this the first time I'm giving this person a rent increase? Or is this the first time I'm giving a renewal? We should simplify this for people. We had something that was working, at least with the Just Cause Ordinance, which is, you must give an offer to renew. And if at that point in time, the tenant elects to reject the offer, one of the things that we're trying to do is also encourage tenants to go out and become property owners. How am I supposed to get out of a lease if I've signed a lease, rates go down, obviously now things are a little bit different, and I want to get out of my lease? There are some tenants that opt not to be in a lease for a host of reasons that has nothing to do with their relationship with their existing landlord. Could be a job change, it could be a neighbor that they can't stand, it could be a promotion that they're looking forward to. Are we now gonna penalize the tenant who says, I'm not gonna take this option because I have something better coming down the pipe? This is kind of shoving something down people's throats that I think creates the animosity that we're seeing between landlords and tenants. Secondly, if we can't read and understand this, how are two people sitting or standing at a balcony, or standing on top of a hood of, you know, next to a hood of a car where this is, most of this stuff is signed informally, gonna be able to figure it out? I think what we should do is go back with the city council and say, we understand what you want. You want to give people some protections, and that's totally fine. I don't think that there's a landlord out there that would say, when the lease is up, I would love nothing more than to lock this person in for the next year. But if at that point in time, for whatever reason, there is a difference, I think we should let people be free. So if the landlord offers this to the tenant, and the tenant comes back and says, hey, I don't want that, then maybe that tenant should, that landlord, I'm sorry, should not have to go back and say to the tenant, every year, or else, I can't increase your rent. Do you want a lease? Do you want a lease? Do you want a lease? Now, maybe we can work something else. And let's say a tenant says, yeah, I actually see that protection. And the tenant gives, as an example, a 180-day notice saying, dear landlord, I intend to remain. Now the landlord says, okay, this person is here, I can plan accordingly. I now have another obligation to go back to giving them a year lease, because they're working together at that point. Right now, if it's a renewal, they have 60 days, and it's, I think that you had mentioned at one point, there was a reason behind the 90 days, right? So we have the 90-day provision, which the landlord has a lease, most leases end on the 365th day, if it's a one-year lease. Most landlords are used to the state law 30 or 60-day. They walk into my office and they say, what do I do? And I say, oh, by the way, you're less than 90 days. I'm sorry, you don't have that option available. If there's any way to at least make these, the notice periods overlap, then you can give as many teaching classes as you want. I guarantee you, they're gonna miss it. Okay? And then comes the question, well, if state law is saying this, why do we have to go with this? Well, it's more restrictive. Fine, but if we keep it more congruent, that whole restrictiveness is also creating animosity between the two sides. So I think we should, and just trying to keep this short, I think for the purposes of the renewals, whether it's the first-time lease, I think that we should go ahead and revisit this entirely. The other thing that you're also doing is, it says, you know, if the tenant rejects, the landlord is required to do things. I don't know if a city can essentially force that on a landlord when people have contracted outside of that. I think that's a legal issue for the courts to decide. Because one of the options that we're also giving is the ability for people to reach, and it's in this ordinance, a written or an oral agreement. And if state law allows a lease, an oral lease up to a year, how can you now tell people, you can't do this, or if you do this, then you must do that? I think there's contradictions all over, and there's a very easy way to simplify this.
So I think for the sake of engaging everyone in the discussion, make sure that everyone's following along.
May I just add one thing also? I believe, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're trying to bring up the ordinance, the section we were talking about. This is the section that we're referencing. This is when the city council back, I think there was an additional amendment that was made in 2019. Prior to that, this ordinance came into, this particular section came into effect before 2019. Am I correct in that, or did it come up in 19? Okay. So in 2019, the, my mic is on. What we're looking at is that, at the, for existing, for existing tenants...
Just closer, yes.
For existing tenants, there must be an offer of a one-year lease. That's what Section A is talking about. For a new tenant, there, so it applies, the offer of a one-year lease applies either to an existing tenant or a new tenant. What the tenant must do then, or the prospective tenant, is... What the tenant must do then, or the prospective tenant, is either accept or reject the lease. That's Section B that's talking about acceptance. And then Section C talks about the rejection of the lease. Jumping forward to Section F, if we want to scroll down a little bit, this is where we're talking about the renewal of the lease. So this is where we're talking about an existing tenant who is, has been in the unit for, starting, let's say, started January 1st. The lease is going to be up on December 31st, and the lease is going to expire on December 31st. And at some point during the tenancy, the landlord decides that he or she would like to increase the rent. And in order to do that, this is why this requirement is in place, is that state law says, as we heard earlier, that there is a 30-day requirement for rent increases that are up to 10%. At the time, the city council looked at that, and with comments that it received from the public, felt like 30 days was not enough time for a tenant to receive a rent increase of 10%. Let's say your rent is $1,500, $150 rent increase, a tenant may not be able to absorb. And this is why the city council really drafted this entire ordinance so that the tenants would have up to 90 days to decide if in fact they would be able to afford that additional rent hike. And so this is where you have a difference between state law and the city ordinance. And the rationale for it predominantly is to allow the tenant an additional 60 days, not just the last 30 days, but an additional 60 days to anticipate a rent increase. What we're talking about here, and the point that committee member Hieropetian is raising, is that it appears to be causing some confusion amongst landlords, certainly, who don't know, and instead of October 1st, starting to plan for that rent increase, they may start on December 1st to offer the rent increase notice, and then come to find out that local ordinance requires 90 days and not 30 days. And so I think the proposal is that it should really reflect, if I'm hearing you correctly, it should reflect what state law requires and not what the city ordinance is stating.
Yes, and here's the other interesting thing. The city council at the time, as it was composed of the members that were there at that time, went ahead and, I don't know why, but they enacted this 14-day requirement. And it's actually funny, is some of the tenants that I represented at the time were actually hurt because of that, because nobody had acted within the 14-day time period. And there were landlords that benefited from that because the tenants were so used to expecting a 30-day period. So there was this concern that there was going to be an immediate backlash, which, very small, but there was. But then the time period that they had put in at the time by not mimicking essentially the state provisions came back and it hurt some people, unfortunately.
I'm not aware that state law requires the tenant to accept the offer within 30 days or reject it.
It doesn't, but if they didn't accept it within 14 days, then essentially there was no, they've rejected the offer according to the terms of subsection B. So what was happening was people were getting these notices, and nobody knew about the 14 days. It was an oddball number. There's nothing really in 14 days anywhere in the Civil Code when it comes to these types of tenancies. And so, you know, some people got, were victims of that type of drafting. Then you've got the 90-day, because it talks about renewal of lease, yet in the first, in the first section, in Section A1B, it says, "Any current tenant." So there is already an inconsistency between A1B and F. Because why wouldn't you afford a current tenant the same protection? Assume for a moment you wanted to give 90 days protection. Why wouldn't you give them 90 days but give them 14, which is what the city council was trying to do at that time?
I'm not really, I'm sorry, I'm not really following the 14-day restriction. The, when an ordinance goes into effect, it has to have a start time. And so what A1B is suggesting is, at any point, if you've got a tenant that's month-to-month, let's say the ordinance was, not let's say, but the ordinance when it was enacted in March 2019. And let's say there is a landlord that has not offered a rent increase since 2019, March 1. And now the landlord wishes to increase the rent. So the first time the landlord is looking to increase the rent, it has to follow the requirements of this municipal code 9.30.025, which is to offer a...
A1B, A1B. That portion of the ordinance.
025, right. It has to off, it has to make the offer, you start with the offer.
Right.
So the first time you make this offer, and then the tenant has an opportunity to accept or reject.
Right. And what happens, what happens if they don't do that within that 14-day period? It's deemed rejected.
Rejected, correct.
What happens next? That's the problem. What happens next? Then the tenant, then the landlord comes back and says, "Oh, you have, you didn't sign within 14 days. You're month-to-month, now I can do whatever I want with your rent."
No, the next time, every time, I think the landlord is, am I correct on that? What is, you would still have to wait 12 months to raise the rent or do the banking, I think. Even if they're month-to-month, you can't...
The rent, let's say you're, assuming you're, what was happening is, in most lease scenarios, a landlord is going to offer usually a tenant that wants to commit to a longer term, they're going to give them a better rate. Usually, that's how it works in the business practice.
That's how I do.
And if they're going to be, if the tenant wants the flexibility to leave, then some landlords, not all, some will change that rate. Well, you've offered a tenant an opportunity, and the tenant unbeknownst to themselves thinks that they've got a longer period of time, when in fact they only had 14 days. And if they didn't take the deal in 14 days, the problem was both landlord and tenant were mixing up what happens next. And that has also been one of the types of elements that has created the sense of animosity and this back and forth. Because people are also making up their own law. Some people don't have the ability or the money to afford an attorney to go in there and fight and say, "You can't just make this stuff up." And what happens? You're all of a sudden dealing with people that are trying to read this, and it says, "But it says 14 days. If it's not 14, then I can do whatever I want." And then you've got people that have waited three years, and they say, "I never renewed, I never increased their rent, but now I want to increase it." And now you have to go back to them and explain to that landlord that you actually have a 14-day period that you still have the benefit of, not this 90-day period. Because everybody now thinks it's a 90-day period.
I think we need to look at G to answer that question. Future, anytime a tenant rejects an offer of a written lease or written lease renewal with a minimum term of one year, the landlord should be required to subsequently offer a one-year lease under the following circumstances. Upon the first date, the landlord notices a rent increase after the first anniversary date of the tenant's rejection of the prior lease or lease renewal. Wouldn't that apply in that situation?
No, I don't think so. What am I going to do? If I offer you a lease and you say, "No." And I say, "Okay, then rent increase." "Oh, you didn't offer me another lease." Well, how am I, are we going to keep playing the cyclical cycle? I mean, that's, it's kind of, it's silly. "I want to raise your rent." "No, you didn't offer me another lease." "Here's a lease, I don't want it." "Okay, rent increase." "Nope, doesn't work." I'm telling you, this stuff doesn't work. This stuff doesn't work. I'm in the trenches with people. I'm sitting there trying to help people move through this process. I don't want to babysit them. People should be able to govern it. And if you've got this type of stuff going on, then here's the problem that we're going to run into. It's the small percentage of landlords and the small percentage of tenants that are going to turn this thing into a game and just make it a free-for-all.
I think the misunderstanding is that if the tenant rejects the lease, then they're free to enter into a month-to-month agreement with substantially the same terms as what was being offered in the lease, removing the one-year requirement.
But why, but the thing though is, is you're preventing a landlord from a rent increase at that point. You're saying, "Any rent increase..."
The rent increase would go into effect, let's say in that particular example where you had a landlord offering the existing tenant a one-year lease, and there's a, you know, a $100 rent increase and that is embedded into a lease agreement. And the tenant rejects because they feel like, "Oh, when my kids are out of school, I'm going to move." The rent increase doesn't go away. The rent increase remains, it's the one-year lease requirement that goes away.
Right, but what if you don't have a rent increase?
If I may interject here...
The only time that you're required to offer the one-year lease agreement is when you're attempting to increase the rent. So along with the rent increase, you offer a one-year lease. The tenant says they don't want the one-year lease, "I'm probably just going to be here another three months." Well, your rent increase, the $100 extra, still goes into effect without the burden of the one-year requirement.
On a month-to-month tenancy.
Correct.
Right, okay, and then you want to raise it again. Then you have to offer another, you have to offer another lease at that point. You don't think that at that point in time, the landlord and the tenant, we're, I've known you a very long time, we're two people that are, you can see, we're trying to figure this out. The goal here has to be that people that are non-lawyers can figure this out. That's the key.
I don't think that, from a staff perspective, and Seepon can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've had that issue, or come up as an issue between landlords or tenants on our end.
You're welcome to sit in my office and listen to this. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Maybe you can hear from the other committee members and their experience with it.
I was going to say, what happens is what I mentioned before, you have to have boots on the ground. So unless tenants are coming to you directly, you're not going to know. People like GTU and other people who are in the trenches with tenants, including someone I'm dealing with, you would be amazed how confused they are of first steps of just moving out, and they want to move out. But there's also some harassment by the landlord, who's then talking about raising rent. And let's be clear, too, multi-dwelling units are kind of different from a condo that you're renting. I think that has to get simplified as well, and I agree with you. Everything needs to be in layman's terms. When you're saying, "I don't think that's happening," it is happening, it just hasn't been presented to you. But it's definitely happening.
Right, so is it the experience that, this particular item being brought up, the 60, the 90-day notice, this 14-day response, is that an issue that is...
Everyone's confused. Like you said, the language, it's the language. It has to just be, you know, it's like something I do in my work as well, in behavior therapy. We need a task analysis, we need to do first this, then that. It just needs to be real simple. This happens first, then second, where people can understand. And I think also, Glendale, let's do better at understanding the population that's here, in your own city, in your backyard, your neighbors. So there's also language barriers. So we have, there's also just the elderly that are here. You know, culturally, just the multi-dwelling families, right? The extension of families. So I think that's where we have to do better and to change the laws, and like you said, simplify things so people understand. Doesn't mean they're going to follow, but you know how it's like, you know, you did your part in trying to simplify it so people can understand, because this is very convoluted. They kind of don't know what direction they're going in, I feel.
So we have two, I think, two separate issues. One question is, if we understand, if we understand, if we understand what the section is talking about, is it just an issue of being clear in the language? Or is it the committee's will that the protection itself should not be there? Those are two separate issues. So one question is, should this section not be here? Or is there a better way of presenting it so that people understand what it says?
Yeah, that's exactly the point. I don't think you should remove the protection. I think that it was, the basis of the protection is to secure occupancy, okay? And that, one of the things that obviously the city is concerned about is the rate of occupancy in the city. So if we have an ordinance that says, "You must extend an offer of a lease," I think, I don't think that's a problem. I think what we have to do though is, as my co-commissioner was saying, is we also have to understand who our people are. If at some point in time, we present an offer and the tenant says, "No," then at some point, we have to let these people figure it out themselves. We have to let them go. We can't keep reeling them in. Now, if we want to apply, if once a tenant, for instance, has elected to reject it, then at that point in time, how do you reel that tenancy back in by saying you have to give future rent increases with a lease? It would be understandable, for instance, if you said, "Look, if you have a lease and the lease is being renewed, then each time you give a renewal, that you must also provide the same notice as given by state law to the potential occupant that they have a right to a lease." And once that person elects that they want to be out, that they're out. Simple.
So you're sort of saying, the offer of the one-year lease should only happen once after...
I, no, I think you should, I think you should renew the offer of a lease each year. It makes sense to do that. I think it makes sense because you're giving the tenant the opportunity. And, you know, we had language that was in the original Just Cause Ordinance that said, so that you couldn't kind of snicker them, or snooker them by saying, "It's, if you go month-to-month, the rent is X, and if you stay a year lease, the rent is Y," because you didn't want to bait and switch the tenant to stay month-to-month, and then wham, you hit them with, you know, an eviction. So the idea is, extend them the protection, afford them the opportunity to make a decision, keep the notice periods consistent with state law. And then, because if the landlord's going to send out a rent increase notice, it's usually accompanied by a new lease. So if you encourage the landlord to do this now, the landlord has to be at some point diligent. They have a responsibility, they're running a business. They can't just wing it and say, "You know what, I'm going to just skirt the laws here and not do it this way." They have to sit down, get a lease, prepare it, put it together with a nice little notice that says, "Dear tenant, this is what I'm doing." But once the tenant and the landlord have made a decision amongst themselves, I think it's at that point in time that the city has to let loose and just say, "Now it's in your, now it's in your premise, that's it."
If I could follow up on that, and then I know Commissioner Gregorian had a comment that he wanted to bring up. So I want to make sure we get back to him. So are you suggesting that, so year one, you're in a lease, you're approaching year two, you offer a lease again as required by law, but if the tenant rejects that, you go month-to-month, and from that point on, in year three, year four, year five, you're done offering them leases?
Yes.
That in year two, once a tenant elects to go month-to-month in year two, that they're no longer offered a lease, required to be offered a lease agreement?
Required to be offered, they can negotiate it.
I can tell you that the council, when they were looking at this, understood that just as landlords have up and down periods, tenants have up and down periods. There are periods in year two that a tenant may not feel comfortable entering into a lease agreement. But those circumstances can certainly change in year three and in year four, where they might need that. And then that's why they continued to have that requirement.
Right.
And so I think they certainly were concerned about the tenant's ability to have a lease option every year, not just in year one. And once you decline it, you're automatically committed to a month-to-month forever in your tenancy.
Unless you negotiate otherwise. Remember, the landlord and the tenant can still negotiate a verbal lease for up to a year by law, and that's perfectly, that's perfectly acceptable.
This law mandates that it be negotiated at the time that the next rent increase is coming in, and that's the kicker.
I understand that, I understand that. But I think that at that point in time, we're going too deep into people's relationships. And I think that that's where it's starting to backfire, because what gives us the, it'll also beg the question, a landlord cannot give, let's say they want to demolish the unit or they want to renovate it. A landlord can't demolish or renovate a unit during the term of a lease. They'd have to wait till that tenant is month-to-month, right?
If the landlord's anticipating demolition, they could, they don't have to give the rent increase so at the expiration of the one-year lease.
Right, but in other words...
So long, it only, it's only triggered when the landlord is looking to increase the rent. So in the interest of time, again, because we've been on this one point, we've made a note, I've made a note of your comments with regard to how you'd like to see changes to this particular section. We've heard from another commissioner about more workshops. We've heard, I think you had a follow-up comment, Mr. Gregorian. You felt that there... We've heard, I think you had a follow-up comment, Mr. Gregorian, you felt that there was no need for the lease requirements, that was one of the earlier comments you made. Are there any additional comments from any of the other committee members?
Can we hear back from Commissioner Gregorian? He's been waiting.
Yes, thank you. I agree with most of the comments that my fellow commissioner, Ayrapetian, is saying, so I'm not going to repeat. However, I really think there, we have to understand one important issue. When the council, several years ago, offered a one-year lease and asked the landlords to offer a one-year lease, the main purpose was to give an assurance to the tenant that your rent is not going to increase at least a year. Now, we have that law that you cannot increase the rent more than a certain percentage every month. You can do it once a year. So that main purpose, the main intention of the council, that the rents be stabilized for a year for the tenant, is already in practice, with or without the lease offer. As I said, I practice that all, every year. And I have had, I mentioned this last meeting, I have had a tenant that I offered the first year lease, she rejected it, and she said, "No, no, no, I may move." She's been in my building for about 13 years now, month-to-month, happily, and one of my best tenants. So what I'm trying to say is, I think to just force tenants and landlords to walk this way, then do that, then do this, then do that, it just creates a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of anxiety, and at the end of the day, it's so complex. I had to read this at least five or six times, and I don't even think that I understand it fully. So I agree with Commissioner Ayrapetian that this needs to be clarified and simplified. And in my opinion, we don't need a lease. We can offer, and if they say no, they say no. It doesn't matter if they say no in 14 days, or 15 days, or 10 days. That's just, it's just putting a lot of unnecessary burden on everybody.
One extra point that...
So my comment, which I insist, is we don't need to force people to get into a one-year relationship if they don't want to.
Noted.
Mr. Zovek, one of the concerns that we had as a committee back in the early 2000s was that if people go month-to-month, and this is where the abuse was, that the landlord would potentially then take advantage of raising the rents and doing all this other stuff. Now, we have 1946.2 and 1947.12 and everything else that came with AB 1482, which says that any future increase, number one, is governed by state law, and then number two, the state law also affords a separate protection, so that the city of Glendale can essentially protect it in a different way, which is saying, if you have a more restrictive provision, then that's what controls. So theoretically speaking, if the rent increase amount is what we're most concerned with, then the worst-case scenario for a tenant would be, after their first lease expires, if they were to be given a second lease option, and the tenant rejects, is that in following subsequent years, the landlord can raise it by 7%. That's really it. So the law is kind of already there, protecting that angle of it.
The law only states that after more than 7%, then there has to be an offer of relocation.
Now, that's item number three, which I agree with, to some point has to be addressed at that point. But at the same point in time, there's a relocation consequence that has to now be factored into that.
Correct. Any other commissioner comments?
I know we have a speaker that'd like to comment on this.
We need to respect the time to, please, we need to give opportunity to every single of us to talk. Thank you.
You certainly have that opportunity. We invite you to comment on...
My commentary will be that we need to look at the practice. What is the practice? Whoever wants to live in month-to-month is living in month-to-month, month-to-month. Whoever wants to sign the lease, they signed the lease, nobody forcing, the relationship is done. But I can, I see that this problem between the lease agreement, it goes, because every time we try, I mean, life change, you can get divorced, somebody passes away the other source of your income at home, it can be many reasons. So when they try to break the lease agreement, it's a penalty. That is the problem. So I'm thinking, and even in the practice, I see that some landlords, they are very understanding for specific situations, and at the same time, they always agree. I heard and I saw, like, people that they were living in single places, and they said, "Okay, I can bring my cousin, I can bring my friend," and they switched the lease. So instead to damage my credit, I bring somebody else, and then I fix it. So there is always a ways to fix, not to be too much taking this too serious, like he does, you know? It doesn't happen. The practice is different. Each individual, each family, it has different situations, and that is done. Is protecting, is there, good, in case somebody wants to take advantage. But in the practice, it's totally different, and then it was working. The only problem is that we have this, the top that we have right now, the ceiling, the 7%, is protecting that, protecting a lot of family to be homeless. And at the same time, it's covered up, because the minimum wage doesn't go up the same way that the rent before, before they have no limit about the increase. So that's why I see that now, this is, maybe we can give some recommendation, but about the lease, it's different than the world that we live in Glendale. So everybody has kind of to accommodate and understanding. That is my opinion.
Any other, the remaining two commissioners?
The policy reason behind the one-year lease is essentially to, obviously to secure the tenants and the landlords. If we can't make, or the city council can't make policy on limited exceptions. Limited exceptions meaning, if there's this one case, or there's this, you know, small little case of this happening or that happening. Yes, those things are gonna happen. The problem is, we're making policy and we're making, you know, laws for the majority of Glendale residents and not for the minority. If we, if we completely, I don't think anybody on the commission has advocated that we get rid of the one-year lease completely. I think its intent is to secure the tenant for that one year, especially taking into consideration the rapid, rapid increasing costs that are happening currently. So I think it should be simplified, yes, but the actual policy should continue. And obviously, the relocation fee is definitely connected to the one-year term. So I mean, you can't just get rid of the one-year term and not necessarily, not dull completely the relocation aspect of it.
Okay. Anyone else, before I go to the public? Do we have one speaker on this item? Herbert Milano?
Members of the...
I'm sorry, just for a point of clarification, I don't think we're done with the entirety of the report, so is this the appropriate time to take public comment?
The indication I was given is that this specific, this specific discussion point of the one-year lease is what was the desire to speak on.
Members of the committee, the issue for landlords and tenants can be stated in one word, stability. Tenants want stability in their rents in the coming years, the landlord wants stability of a renter. And that's why the practice is, you give one-year lease, and then after that, it's usually month-to-month. The solution that we came up with back 20 years ago was really very elegant, it was give tenants at least a 12-month notification of rent increases. That was the idea of the 12-12 program. You give a lease, that gives you a one-year assurance, and then you declare what the next rent increase would be. And that's what I had discussed with Assemblymember Laura Friedman. It is a practice, as far as notification, that is common in commercial leases. You tell them, "Here's a four-year lease, and if you decide to renew, here is the additional one." I would like for this committee to consider the simplification that comes with at least that portion of it, giving tenants a 12-month notification of rent increases, no matter what it is. This way, it allows for a significant amount of flexibility. If you discuss it and think about it, it's probably the most elegant and simplest solution that you can find, and it gives everybody the objective, the stability they need. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to repeat everything. So we've heard from some commissioners, some concern with this particular part of the ordinance. And I'm wondering, is this is an area, then, that staff can look at, having heard some of the concerns, and possibly come back at the next meeting with alternatives or discussion points again on this particular point?
Yes.
Does this need to be taken as a vote of the committee in order for staff to go back and start to look at this? Does it need to have a vote?
I mean, we could do it either way. I don't think there's any objection at this point to offer some simplification. The other areas where the comments were somewhat different, which was, you know, after the one-year lease, or the second year has expired, then, you know, that part doesn't, no additional requirement should be placed. I think those items would require a vote, but to the extent that we can take another look and see if we could offer better clarity in the various sections, that we could, you know, potentially massage a little more and bring back at the next meeting.
Okay, so having heard that, is there any opposition to then staff going back with everything that's been said about this, and giving it, this element a second look, and then bringing it back at a future meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. May I ask one question? Why were subleases excluded?
I'm sorry, what?
Why are subleases excluded from the provisions of this section?
Um, let's see.
Most landlords don't allow subleases, anyway.
And you're looking specifically at which section?
If you look down at section I, this section shall not apply to, and then item number one is a rental occupied by a tenant who subleases that unit to another tenant for less than one year.
Very often, I think the, I'm gonna try to remember why specifically. I think it was because with subleasing, you typically have a roommate situation, you have a situation where you've got someone who, in other words, a tenant who is subleasing wouldn't then be mandated to comply with these requirements. That person living in a household with another person in the household should be unable to break a lease from the landlord, would not then be obligate, or forced to live with a roommate that they are no longer getting along with, because they're in the same four walls. So that's why I believe that section would have been...
I agree with you. The only thing is, is there have also been circumstances that I've seen that, for instance, this happens with, like, JPL employees, where they'll sign a lease, and then one employee will move to, or transition to a different position, and they will sublease the entire unit to the next person. So I agree, in a roommate scenario, that plays well. But in the other scenario, we should technically afford that sublettee, the same protection we'd be giving to the main tenant, if the intent of the law is to be consistent throughout.
Well, and in that situation, the first tenant and the second tenant could potentially approach the landlord and ask for an assignment, rather than a sublease.
It depends. Again, in that particular job, people are going and coming, and I've seen with the landlords that I have approached on those types of tenancies, JPL employees somehow get a pass with everything. So it's, there's something, I guess, Mr. Gregorian was saying, something stable about that. But I think that the provision should also afford that if a tenant is going to sublease to the next sublettee, and in the entirety of the unit, that that also be considered for, just so that we can maintain consistency, because I don't think we wanna be back here in 20 years doing this all over again. I won't be, that's for sure.
Okay. So that is noted, and then I think then we're gonna ask for Seepan to go on to the next item of discussion.
All right. So the next item is just cause eviction, anything related to just cause evictions. Staff actually does have a recommendation for this section, or a particular portion of this section. Landlords have the opportunity to evict a tenant to move in a resident manager or a family member, and staff has a couple of suggestions on that, and making a couple of requirements for the types of tenants that are allowed to be evicted versus the types that are not. So Clover City actually has specific requirements for tenants that can not be evicted, based on this particular reason. If a tenant is a senior household, if a tenant is terminally ill, if a tenant is low income, or if the household has a child that's going to school during the school year, the landlord would not be able to evict any of these types of tenants to move in a resident manager or a family member. This is what's in the actual ordinance, so it's a little more lengthier. So if a tenant has been residing in the unit for at least 10 years and is 62 years or older, or handicapped, this person would not be allowed to be evicted, to have a resident manager move in, or a family member move in, or if the tenant is terminally ill, if the tenant is low income, and if the tenant is, has a child that's enrolled in school, K to 12. Staff suggests adding these to our current ordinance, or if not all, at least the first two or first three. And you guys can discuss whether you'd like any of these to be included in the current ordinance.
Has staff seen a concern with property owners asking seniors, or having seniors' families with children move out for the purpose of a resident manager or a landlord and landlord family member?
I think there has been a rise in that. We've noticed that landlords have been asking, giving those types of evictions, and a lot of our population is 62 years and older, so that has been an impact that we've seen. K to 12 children, not so much, but as far as elderly tenants, yeah, that we've seen that.
Are these with units less than 16 in the building? With properties with less than 16 units?
No, this would apply to every, everything that just causes eviction applies to, so...
Okay. So people are moving in managers, even though it's an eight-unit building?
Well, I thought you meant which part would this apply to, what type of units this would apply to. So no, in those cases, no. Are you talking about what we're noticing?
Correct.
No, we haven't noticed the resident manager as much as family move-ins. The resident manager, we've had a few cases, but family move-ins, we've had a lot more.
And in those few cases, have the, do you know if the apartment size has been 16 or lower, where they didn't even require by state law a resident manager, but the owner was saying, "I wanna choose to have a resident manager"?
No, I believe, for the most part, they've been larger buildings, but I can't for sure.
Question on the resident manager. If there is an instance where there was only one unit in that 16-over apartment building, would the city overlook the violation of not being able to evict one of these class members that you're looking at?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by one unit?
Well, if there was only one particular unit that was appropriate for a resident manager, and that particular unit had one of these class members, the senior household or terminally ill household, would the city overlook the violation that they did not have a resident manager because of that instance?
Lucy?
I think certainly that's something that is up for discussion. Currently, I think what the code says is that, and now we're looking at, it's a good idea for us to have the language up to the extent that we can, in 0030, section H1. for us to have the language up to the extent that we can in 0.030, section H1 and 2. And it says, "The resident manager provided that no alternative vacant unit is available for occupancy by a resident manager, except that where a building has an existing resident manager, then owner may only evict the existing resident manager in order to replace him or her with a new manager." Right? That's what it says currently. And then what the family member one says, "The landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession of the rental unit for use and occupancy by the landlord or the landlord's spouse, grandparents, brother, sister, father-in-law, et cetera, identified family members. However, a landlord may use this ground to recover possession for use and occupancy by landlord, landlord's spouse. Only ones may use it for, on these grounds, only ones for that person in each rental complex of the landlord." So your question is, if the, if the...
If there is only one unit that was applicable to that resident manager that they had to hire, and that one unit was one of the protected classes or the classes that they're trying to protect, would the city overlook the violation that there was no resident manager for that building for that time being?
I think it depends on how we craft that language. So for example, if the resident, if the landlord feels that the most appropriate place for the resident manager is apartment number one on the first floor in the front of the building, but that, but there's a vacancy in unit number four, and the landlord's trying to replace unit number one, and that person has these restrictions or qualifications, I think that would be up for discussion as to how we craft that. We could go back and look at Culver City, see how they've done that. But obviously, the idea there was to offer these additional protections to someone who would not have the ease of or the mobility to vacate. So certainly something that we could consider as part of the drafting.
Yeah, I'm looking at the liability concerning the building itself from other tenants of not having a resident manager due to this carve-out.
So we were speaking earlier that the state law requires resident managers for buildings of 16 units or more. So are you saying, are you asking that if we became aware of a project in which a 20-unit building was finally moving in its first resident manager, would we have taken, would we take action against the owner for not had previously having a resident manager?
Oh, that's not, that's not, I don't believe that we would be the enforcement arm on that.
Well, how about the liability?
And I misunderstood your question. We still would not be the enforcement arm of that. That would be regulated by state law.
I think the liability would be state.
You have, for clarifying.
You have been, though, we had, we actually had a building where we were in between managers, and we got a notice from the city and after an inspection. You do enforce that, but.
With the city of Los Angeles, I noticed that some of the language looks identical to what LA has in their rent control ordinance. Normally, if the abuse is the person has this extensive family, now they're going to move in all their brothers and sisters, really what happens is, it's not so much, the problem is not that that person's really coming to live there. The problem is they're using that person as escape goat to get this person out and then to jack the rent up. That's where the problem comes in. So what the city of LA does is you basically, and this is where I have challenged relocations to determine whether or not it's good faith. I had a situation where a kid was leaving a 19,000-square-foot mansion to go live in a one-bedroom apartment. Now, sure, this person claimed they wanted to sow their oats, but they weren't going to make it past the deposition. The dad was just using the kid as an excuse to get the tenant out and then, you know, give it a month or so, and then we'll just jack up the rent. I think what we should do is have some sort of protection that if the landlord is in fact not moving in a family member, or they should suddenly do a switcheroo, and they've got the "for rent" sign a month later, yeah, there should be a consequence for that. That's not what this is for. It's not, hey, it's cheaper to evict and call it, you know, Auntie Rose is moving in, and then rent it to so-and-so for another 1,500 bucks. No, that should not happen. And that's why in LA, there is at least an enforcement arm of that. We don't have that here in the city of Glendale. So what's going to happen is, is these people are going to be banging on council member doors, saying, "Help me, help me," and then eventually, they're going to have to find a lawyer somewhere or some tenant assistance center that would be willing to help them. By the way, one other thing that's very important...
Just to respond to that, if there is bad faith involved, this ordinance would allow for enforcement of bad faith, although the penalties are not hefty enough for it to make an impact. But I think, Committee Member Marshand, I think you wanted to comment on this.
Yes, I completely agree. I believe when we were last in chambers, someone called in and, or they were in person, I can't remember, called in, and that was their issue, that the landlord did the same thing. They wanted to get them out, claiming it was for family. They ended up moving out. And that's, there's a vulnerability with tenants that we just have to understand. There's a vulnerability there. And again, I love the workshops, I was going to jump on that, so thank you for saying that, because people don't know, and especially mom and pop, this is where I'm finding the worst offenders are, the mom and pop landlords, and the tenants are just bamboozled. And so, I agree, they are definitely saying they're moving a family member in, and it's just not happening. And I know of a story where a tenant did set it up, like a sting on their own, and caught the landlord, and it, the landlord had to pay, you know, a hefty fine in court about it. So I agree, that's very important. There has to be, again, a checks and balances and enforcement, and then what does that enforcement look like, and who actually does the enforcing?
And by the way, Ms. Verpetian, with respect to the bad faith, I mean, I'm going to put my landlord lawyer hat on for a second. I could very easily say Auntie Rose will move in for a month, there's my good faith, and she decided she wanted greener pasture somewhere else. Good luck proving that that was bad faith, as long as, you know, that has happened. So you're going to now, and how many tenants are going to have the funds to really go challenge that? Who's going to want to really do that? So what are they going to do? They're just going to get up and move on, and someone's going to get away with it. I think the safest thing would be is to put some sort of a time requirement, to say, for instance, if you're going to move in this person, that this unit technically gets put on ice for whoever the real culprit is for, let's say, a period of a year. I'm just throwing something out at random. Then at that point in time, the landlord has to balance this no-rent situation for a year, and I guarantee you a lot, that's going to deter a lot of landlords from jumping on that, on that bandwagon. And look, tenants also talk, so they're not, again, I agree with what you were saying, the people, you know, we have smart people in the city, so guess what happens? When Auntie Rose comes in, and then two months later, the next person comes in, usually what I see with tenants that have come to my office that want to go back after the landlord for a bad faith situation, is it's the tenants that call that old tenant up and say, "Hey, you were a great neighbor. By the way, you'll never guess what happened here." So, you know, there's, there is another natural checks and balances, but I think if the city wants to help in this area, all we have to do is put a simple timeline and say, "Okay, you want to do that, then that person can't be out," just like we have with the renovation situation. It's got to be a pretty much, you're not just coming in to change out a light switch. If it works with that, we should also implement something similar with the family exception, because obviously, the family member's going to be there a while. Now, if they should move in in a month, and let's say, God forbid, the parents should die, that person was in a terminal ill situation, and the landlord is a relative and wants that person to be close, then that person should be excused. There's no, I would assume that there's no hanky panky going on there.
My question is, do we have statistics, numbers of how often these kind of situations arise? Because we are talking about something really exceptional. In my experience, for the past almost 40 years, I've not had this situation happening to me or anybody that I know. And I know that there are culprits, there are people who violate this or abuse their situation, but this seems to me more of an exception, a huge exception, rather than the norm. And I would much rather see that we concentrate on the overall picture, and then these exceptions, we might come to some kind of a conclusion, but putting so much time and effort into this, which, again, if it is a constant happening every day with every building, or, of course, I'm exaggerating a little, but if it is just once in a while and one nasty landlord doing the wrong thing, I don't think we should concentrate on these exceptions. Let's just have the overall policy first.
With all due respect, let's go back to, you may be the exception of a landlord.
Thank you.
You may be the exception, and wonderful, but just because you don't see it, just because you don't know about it, does not mean it's not happening.
It is happening, but how often?
It's happening.
How often?
So what I'll start doing...
Do we have statistics for it?
I can start documenting. I can start, the tenants who call me with advocacy that I do, I can start documenting, which I've wanted to do, and let them tell their story, because it's really happening. It's not just every once in a while. It's happening more often than you think.
So, this is the challenge of the committee, and it kind of goes back to, I believe, what Commissioner Zagarian was mentioning earlier. Everyone's bringing up their own particular experiences, and then maybe a view on wanting to change the rental rights program because of that experience. So are we really looking at changing the ordinance because of a small number of exceptions that might be working for a large number of other people? Or are we changing the ordinance for some exceptions, and there's really not a feeling that it's really doing harm and it's really providing everyone protections? Is there something really wrong with requiring that if a landlord is moving in a family member, that they have to be there for one year? Is it really unfair to that landlord? And if, you know, the committee feels that it's not, then are you really making a kind of a hasty decision on something based on one experience or two?
Actually, I do support that, that if a landlord moves a tenant in the name of bringing a family member just to remove that tenant, and after the tenant moves, the family members moves in a month or so, I believe there should be consequences. And I don't think that is fair, I don't think it is right, and it shouldn't be done. But again, how often does that happen? That's my question. And my feeling is, the suggestion that, yes, if the family member is moving in, let's say, we suggest that he has to be there or she has to be there at least one year, that's understandable, that's fair. I do understand, and I agree with it. I tend to agree with it. I need to see the details. However, again, I think we are concentrating on exceptions. Let's just do the overall thing, and then we handle the smaller exceptions in due course.
Let me, may I?
I just wanted to summarize the discussion so that we could get some clarification as to specifically what we're talking about. We're looking at 9.30.030 subsection H that deals specifically with the just cause, the various causes for eviction. And this particular cause says the landlord wishes to move out the, a tenant in order to move in either a manager or a family member. And the comments that I heard that were stated were along the lines of, what is the enforcement of that requirement? How does that get enforced? If the landlord just moves in, you know, their kid for a year, a month, and then moves them out, who would do the enforcement? And I think that's one area that the committee was expressing a desire to hear feedback on, or some alternative options. The next one was with regard to the eviction itself. Should there be an additional requirement of time for the new person that comes in to remain in that unit? Maybe a period of one year is what was suggested. And the third area is what was brought up by staff, and that had to do with, should there be some additional considerations for tenants who are in that more vulnerable category? And what should those protections be? So I think those are the three areas that we've been discussing so far.
I have one more suggestion. I'm all for, when it comes to family members that they're trying to displace for these class members, vulnerable class members, I am all for, in terms of providing protection for those people, but in terms of, when it comes to the course of business or the safety of the other tenants or in violation of state law, I suggest that maybe carving out the resident manager section and then leaving in the family members would be a better idea.
My concern with that is...
And it's more verifiable, too, with the resident manager versus then...
Yeah, I would think so. I think the resident manager is a little bit more straightforward. The only concern, though, is, for instance, where we want to be careful, and you have to be very careful about this, because this is where the abuse comes in. Technically, we're all terminally ill, it's just a matter of when, right? If we're dealing with a situation where we're trying to, like what LA has with relocation assistance, for instance, their definition of what qualifies for relocation includes a difficulty with mobility. And so if I bang my knee against a drawer and I get someone that says to me, "I need a cane for a week," I technically have a difficulty with mobility. I'm using this as an example only because what happens is, people will come back and claim that they are entitled to the qualified amount because they fall under a certain protected class. You know, if you have somebody that is clearly under a diagnosis, has been there for a period of time, and there's an imminent indication of death, I don't think there's a person that's going to sit there and say, you know, "Yeah, let's just throw them out." But if that, but now what we don't want to do is, we don't want to bring doctors into the courtroom and say, "Well, explain your diagnosis. Does the person have at least a year? Do they have two years? I mean, look at the advancements in medicine." We don't want it to get to that. I think so. If you're going to touch that, I think it should be very clear and very straightforward. Again, I go back to the renovating the unit situation. It's a 30 days, it's pretty black and white, you know, it's kind of clear, if there's enough dust and stuff going on, it's a 30-day situation. Same thing with a family member, if they're going to come in, and again, I use the year as an example, but whatever that period of time is, that it's not to handcuff the landlord, but it's also not to reward them for being smart. Otherwise, they're going to bring, I'm Armenian, we have large families. I mean, you know, all of a sudden, they're going to bring in every aunt and uncle in the book and start loading that up. We don't want that to happen either. The other thing, too, is perhaps with these properties, if we want to afford a different protection, let's say that if the landlord is going to replace a 20-unit building with a family member, maybe they can only do that to a certain percentage of the units. They can't go up to 20 units and get everybody out that way. Maybe they can do it as to, let's say, 20% or 10%, whatever, so that that also isn't abuse. So if you're going to touch this, because state law 1946.2 already has some of that language in there, then I think that if you're going to touch it, make sure that you address it appropriately so that it's, again, simple and it's effective. And again, if I'm sitting and having a consultation with a landlord and I say, "Great, you can move your grandmother in, but she's going to have to be there unless she dies, God forbid," then I think that that conversation changes tone. Going back to what you were saying, whether or not this is an exception or not with these situations, the problem, the problem is, once the market takes off and you have a rental cap, and the landlord is hearing their friends across the street say, "Oh, you'll never guess how much I'm getting for my two-bedroom," then what they all do is, they come marching into our offices and they say, and not just me, but any other person that practices, and says, "I got to get this person out. I'm stuck, I have 10 reasons, give me the reason that works." And that's why it becomes, for instance, in the city of LA, there hasn't been a rent increase for the last two years, and the landlord's insurance is still going up, and the property taxes are still going up, and now you think that that landlord is not looking for an excuse under one of the stated provisions to get them out? That's the problem there, is I think that if the city is also keeping up with it, then the landlord's not going to touch it either. But this is where you have to be careful, because once you touch one side, you better touch the other side, otherwise, you're going to have another problem.
So with regard to this particular section, because I think we're going to move to the next... next slide, we're talking about the eviction causes that are covered under 030, 9.30.030. And we, the staff, I think, identified one particular section. Doesn't mean the other sections cannot be discussed. We welcome your comments in those other areas as well. If you're not prepared to do that at this time, certainly, we can hear from you next time. But I think we're ready to move on to the next section if there are no comments on the remainder of-
I just want to say, I do like how Culver City has done their requirements for each one.
Okay.
So any other comments on evictions in general? Any of the other requirements? Adding new requirements? Getting rid of requirements?
I guess because of that, practices happen very often. That's why is the rent registry, rent registry, that is started not too long ago, and then all the information is there right now. Transparency is very important. Thanks.
Okay, so rent registry was not started. There is no rent registry requirement. And so there's no way for the city to actually record some of the enforcement requirements. For example, a tenant that comes to us four months later and says, you know, my landlord moved me out to move in a family member, unless they've got some evidence to demonstrate that, we would have no, the city would have no record of it, which makes enforcement a little bit of a challenge. It's not impossible, but it does make it a little bit more difficult to enforce that.
Quick question. Sipon, is a landlord only allowed to do that once in a building?
I believe per family, yes.
Per family member. So you can't move your daughter from one to two to three to four, but you could move in your daughter until one, your son until two?
So there's no prohibition on the number of times you can exercise that exemption in the same building?
A landlord may use this ground only once for that person in each rental complex of the landlord. So they could use the daughter to move in Sue into this building, and then they could move Sue into another building, and keep moving Sue around. But Sue can't be moved around within that particular complex.
But at the same time, a landlord can move Sue in unit one, then I can move Tony in unit two, and I can move my Aunt Lucy in number, unit three of that same building, until I have turnover completely in the entire building.
That's true.
And just from-
And I think one of the comments was, maybe there should be a cap on the number of times the landlord's able to do that.
And exercise that clause. And then, Sipon, have you, has staff heard more than one-per-building type of scenario?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay.
So how many of those have you heard in the, say, the past, I don't know, six months or a year?
It's anecdotal. I don't have exact numbers. I can get that to you next meeting, see if we have more specific numbers, but I can't get concrete right now.
Are there any?
We do keep track, not specifically of eviction, just of calls and complaints. When we get a phone call or an email, we look at that. But specifically, I can't say, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can't say if we've-
So you can't even estimate if it's between 0 and 10, or between 100 and 150, or any very rough estimate?
I don't want to give any numbers and then be wrong.
I think what Mr. Zadorian's saying is that we do keep track of the calls that come in, and we may be able to provide, if the tenant has provided the basis for the eviction, and we've kept track of it, then yes, we could provide that number. But you also have to keep in mind that not every tenant calls the city to complain about that. So we definitely would not have any record of that.
Of course, that's very true.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And actually, your question kind of leads into one of the other discussion points we'll be having, or one of the other charges to the committee about outreach and education. And it's really, in the last two years, it's been very difficult to have the outreach and education that we started initially when the rental rights program was passed. I mean, we were a year into having monthly meeting, community meetings. We were at events promoting this, and then COVID just shut down everything. And now we're trying to start that up again. Okay.
Just one quick question. This section on eviction, it applies to any number of units? So small, four-unit, eight-unit, or up? Or does it differentiate?
The, anything, duplexes and single-family homes are exempt from the ordinance in the entirety. All the other, rest of them apply. So three-plus units.
Mr. Moderator, for the sake of time, can we either move a little faster, or kind of postpone the rest of the conversation for the next meeting?
Well, we don't, I've got 7:30 right now.
It's almost about two hours now.
Right. Do we want to call it a meeting if we get close to eight, or even sooner than that?
Sure.
So whatever we don't handle, we'll bring back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. So our next discussion is specifically on relocations for evictions. Our current relocation formula is two times fair market rent plus $1,000. I know last meeting, there was some discussion on it, and some of you wanted to change that, possibly increase it. Staff looked at some other cities, would, to see what their relocation calculations are. We're just going to go through that. So we looked at LA County, LA City, and then Burbank and Pasadena. The county is three times the median rent based on dwelling unit size, in addition to costs associated with utilities, moving, things like that. Those costs are already calculated in these numbers over here. And LA County actually breaks down the types of tenants. The standard tenant, the regular tenant, that's not 62 years older, qualified tenant is 62 years older, and then there's a low-income tenant. So if you're a low-income tenant, let's say, in a two-bedroom, it would be three times $15,000. That would be your relocation fee.
So the current FMR, and that going back to the city's formula in the previous slide?
Do you want to see the current FMRs?
The current, two times FMR plus 1,000. Is the current formula under just cause eviction?
That's R formula, yes.
Correct. GHI or J, right?
I'm sorry?
For GHI or J evictions.
Right.
Not for the other one.
Correct. Right, only no-fault eviction.
Correct. And then, as you mentioned, there was discussion at that time, well, FMR back in 2001 could have been very reflective of what it takes to rent in the area, and whether or not something like that needs to be adjusted. So this is what staff then picked up on, and is bringing back for possible consideration. But just, can you remind me what the current FMR is?
I have it in the end of the presentation, I believe. So for a one-bedroom studio, it's 1,384, one-bedroom, 1,604, two-bedroom, 2,044, and so on.
So under R ordinance, a one-bedroom being displaced under just cause would be two times 1,604 plus 1,000. So what's that, roughly 4,200?
Where did those numbers come from?
HUD.
Okay.
Wait, if you recall, we had talked about how annually-
Yeah, okay, sorry.
HUD for Glendale?
HUD for entire LA County.
For LA County.
They do not break it down by agency. They break it down by county.
Because I think this issue was also discussed last time. This seems to be kind of low numbers.
Correct.
And, you know, if you are talking about fair market value, and if you want to relocate tenants, and give them enough good funds to be able to find another place, I think we have to revise this up, because that, these are incredibly low. And again, I'm talking about, and now I'm talking against landlords, but that's what is fair.
So then, under LA City is another example?
Right. So LA City just basically establishes the type of tenant and how long they've been there. So if you're an eligible tenant, you're just basically a regular tenant. And if you're a qualified tenant, you're 62 years older or disabled. So an eligible tenant who's been there three years, or less than three years, gets almost $9,000. If they've been there three or more years, it's $11,000. A low-income tenant, who is an eligible tenant, $11,000, and so on. So these are set numbers, and it's based on the type of tenant you are. So low-income tenant, that's been there for a number of years, gets a certain amount, versus what our formula is, where it's three times fair market rent. It's a set amount. I believe they just change it annually. They do it internally versus allowing HUD to decide the fair market rent.
Question. Have you seen other cities use a sliding scale on these relocation fees? Because the burden of, the difference in the burden from, let's say, a six-unit landlord versus a 50-unit landlord, it's quite different.
Right.
So have you, have you seen people, or other cities have sliding scales on that?
The only city, if you look at the last column, it says mom-and-pop properties. And those are properties with four or less units, a landlord that owns properties with four or less units. So that's kind of like a sliding scale, because those properties pay much less than larger units. So LA is somewhat of an example, but I don't think I've seen one where it defines three to five, five to 10.
Yeah, okay.
And Burbank follows state law, so it's just one times monthly rent. Whatever the current rent is, that's what the tenant's going to get to move out. And that's based on state law, so Burbank just strictly follows that. And then Pasadena is a little bit interesting. It's two times, 2.5 times fair market rent plus moving expenses. And moving expenses, again, are broken down by types of tenants. General tenants, moving expenses would be 1,338, and then seniors, dependents, people with disabilities, it's 4,033. So that'd be two times fair market rent plus one of those two numbers. And then on top of that, if you've been there more than 10 years, for every additional year you've been there after 10 years, the base, which is this calculation, is increased 10%. So no more than 200%, if that makes sense. It's a little bit complicated.
So-
That's an SAT question right there.
Yeah. Is there another example that you have, or is that it?
I believe that's it for her.
Okay. So in the city's relocation formula for the other scenarios, the other two components that we have, the relocation is tied to either the existing rent, or in certain cases, the rent increase amount that's being proposed, that's now displacing the tenant, correct?
We can't use that in this situation, because if it's an eviction, they're not offering an increase.
I see.
So you can't use proposed, and you can use current rent, but not proposed. And Burbank uses current rent, but their multiplier is very low.
I see.
So in this one, and I know there's another section that deals with relocation, and at some point, when we talk about both sections, or develop some sort of a formula, there may be some benefit to standardizing, so there's just one relocation value that we're working from instead of the two different scenarios. But I think here, the idea was just to bring you some information and get your feedback as to whether or not there should be any sort of a change to this section, or if it should be left the same.
Back in, in the last committee, when we were trying to decide what would be the best way, at the time, actually, it's interesting, is we had proposed some formulas that were actually higher than the FMR times two plus 1,000. At the time, that was the higher number, so everybody pushed for that, and then we kind of stuck with it. One of the undertones, though, at the time, was relocation was not necessarily seen as an obligatory consideration, but more of a gratuitous consideration, given the fact that the landlord has elected to terminate the tenancy earlier. And again, back then, you didn't have the just cause restrictions that you now have under 1946.2. So right now, a landlord would have to basically terminate the tenancy under one of the specified reasons. The concern that I have is, I don't think anybody, and even back then, we agreed that it would be appropriate that if you're going to uproot someone, that there should be some assistance given. That would be, that would be the right balance, given the other option that would be available to you. The concern, though, that I have with what I have seen, I pulled up California Health and Safety Code, Section 50072, which is what happens in the city of Los Angeles. I can't remember the last time a tenant didn't demand the full qualified amount. There isn't a landlord that wants to litigate that and pay fees, because in that section, it says that anybody that is suffering from an orthopedic disability, impairing personal mobility, or physically, or a physical disability affecting his or her ability to obtain employment. And then it goes on. What we don't want is, in this city, is just the craziness I've seen in the city of LA. There are most landlords that, from what I have seen, when the person was under a disability, or if they were elderly or whatever, and it was, for lack of a better term, obvious, there was never a question. It was pay the check. But what happens is, is the person that comes in with these funky doctor's notes, and they find these excuses, and now, thanks to the internet, I mean, people can get pretty much anything that they want. You can have a tele, whatever it is, tele-video consultation, and you get a letter from a doctor in god knows which country. Just like, we're also seeing a lot of the emotional service animals. Everybody wants a pet, wants to call it an emotional service animal. There are people that need it, that are diagnosed with it, that should have it, but there's a great majority that basically are abusing that, that system and that opportunity. Whatever you do, it's got to be simple again, and I cannot emphasize this enough, because we're not, it, the city, when we were in that committee years ago, was not in the business to just start writing checks. It's assuming that the landlord has a good faith cause, it's to provide an allowance. And I agree that the former allowance payment seems a bit low, seems a bit low. But I think we have to work out a concession here, not that this person has to support the other individual. It has to be a sensible formula that I think we can embrace. Because the other thing, too, is this, you want to encourage the tenant and the landlord to move on with their business. You don't want the relocation fee to become the sticking point. So I think if you can figure out something that's fair that the tenant will take, and it's something that's fair that the landlord's willing to give, then it'll happen almost instantaneously on its own. So.
Are there any other comments in this particular area? I'd be happy to try to summarize. Are there any other thoughts from any other committee members? I guess the question for me, and I don't know if you both have the same question, was there a particular formula that you prefer from the examples that we've provided? Do you like the counties, the city of LA's, Burbank, or? Well, I don't think it'd be Burbank, because at least a couple of you have said that it should be more, not less, and Burbank would be less.
Is there, yeah. I think it should be based off their current rent. That's kind of what they did in Section B, when they went ahead and came up with that formula. That's what the city council was looking towards. And I think in the city of Glendale, rather than, than sticking with some sort of an arbitrary number that gets picked out of thin air, I think if we go based off of the rent, A, it's simpler for the tenant to understand, one times my rent, two times my rent, whatever that number is, the landlord, I got to pay them their rent. Okay? Even the FMR calculation, I wasn't a big fan of it back then. My proposal was to give them two times their rent at the time, because it was an easier number to calculate. Most people can't even find this one-line number that's dug, that's deep in 500 pages of the HUD guidelines. So, yeah, I think we got to keep it simple. If we start throwing arbitrary numbers, qualified versus eligible and non-eligible, and you're just going to create, you're going to create a fighting situation here.
I think from staff's perspective, there is a possible recommendation. Is that something that the committee would like?
I like that. It seems reasonable. And does that, does it matter how long a tenant has been living there?
No.
Okay.
So am I correct? This would just be straight through, three times current monthly rent?
Or FMR, depending upon which is higher?
Yeah. Plus 1,000, 2,000.
2,000.
So it would, instead of the two- So, it would, instead of the two times plus 1,000, which is currently, the recommendation is three times plus 2,000.
Three times the current rent or FMR, whichever is greater.
So, the multiplier is higher. It goes from three to two, and then the static number is doubled.
How did you come to with these numbers?
Well, you made it a point to increase it. That was your desire, so we figured just upping the numbers.
So, basically, this is an arbitrary number?
Right.
When did we express this desire? I'm still, I've heard this said a couple, I know that was a point that we wanted to discuss, but not so much a desire.
I think there was a, similar to the comments that were made today, there were similar comments made at the last time. Must have made an impression on staff, I guess.
Okay.
But again, that's just a recommendation. I think maybe what, we're not going to be discussing the other relocation value today. We'll probably do that next time. So, maybe we take a look at both of those together and then come back with a single relocation proposal.
Since we're the last seven, is there a way to get public comment on this as well? Because we just happen to be the seven that were picked. I think that the members of the public, other landlords and tenants should have some say in this thing. They should participate. I think it would be helpful.
These are public meetings. Everyone is welcome to attend.
Is there a way for them, other than just, because obviously, this comes up now, and when they read the business agenda and it says, we're going to go over the renters' rights program, I'm assuming most people don't understand that that includes, or they may not, or they may not be clear that the renters' right includes the relocation. If we were to put it on an agenda item and say, we'd like to hear about your thoughts on, you know, relocation, or something to that extent so that we can get feedback. Because we're going, we're just the small subset of the bigger, of the bigger group.
What we can do is, on the agenda each time, offer the, for example, the sections that we've been discussing, we could incorporate that into the agenda item itself.
Right.
Okay, so...
And spread the news about what we're doing here so people can attend. Because I'm telling you, just like you had mentioned earlier, you know, I can lead you to the well, you know, but I can't make you drink the water. So, it's kind of the same thing. Like, I've told people about our committee, please come in person, please. I, you know, I mean, people have already asked me, where do I even find the channel? What channel, what station? I mean, come on. So, we have to, you know, kind of take people by the hand, unfortunately, or fortunately.
Certainly, you're not making any decisions tonight. You're not going to be changing, voting to change the ordinance at the next meeting. So, there will be time to agendize the fact that rental rights program will, you know, a final vote will be taken by the ad hoc committee, and these are the items that are being considered to be amended and then recommended to the city council for further consideration.
Mr. Zovek, is there a way that we might ask the GTV-6 to also publicize the meeting and encourage people to participate? Maybe we can put some kind of a ad or announcement and, again, just encourage everybody, all the residents, especially tenants, to participate.
Certainly, we could talk about that when we go into the next area of discussion, which is education marketing. And we won't be bringing back the rental rights program for final recommended changes until after we have the education marketing discussion.
And for a point of clarification...
And we can, I'm sorry. And then we can include any recommendations by the committee of marketing and test it on the rental rights ordinance.
Fair enough. That's for that part. But generally speaking, our meetings, you know, just like today, we had one speaker who is very experienced and, you know, has a lot of knowledge that we can use. But I would really like to see our meetings to somehow be more publicized, more advertised, whatever the name is. But I would like to see GTV-6 once in a while, you know, when they have their programs, between the two programs, announcing things, maybe if it is possible, to announce our meetings and really encourage people to participate. I would really like to hear from the public also.
We could run a PSA that just runs randomly during the day of GTV-6's programming and just say, rental rights committee meets every, you know...
That's exactly what I have in mind.
Blah, blah, blah. Here's our...
That's exactly what I have in mind. If we can do that, that would be great.
And I like Ms. Varpetian's comment about if we can break it down, kind of like how we even have it on this one PowerPoint, you know, you look at that like, oh, so this is what we're going to talk about. It makes, it makes it easier to digest. And a point of clarification, Mr. Zovek, the staff suggestion is only as it relates to Section A, not to B, correct? This is not intended to be a relocation suggestion for the second subsection B for the renewal as it currently stands. We're not changing that formula, are we?
This is strictly for the just cause eviction component of moving a person out.
Right, for GHIRJ.
This is not for the part if you exceed the 7%?
Correct.
Okay. So, this is only...
I just want to make sure, this isn't a staff suggestion for both of those.
No, no, two times FMR is strictly for just cause eviction.
Has staff considered, or has there been any discussion or direction by the city council to look at the second item, too, or none?
There has not been any direction to look at the second item. That doesn't preclude you all as a committee for maybe wanting to revisit that and look at those calculations as well.
Right. Yeah, because again, the sum of this is straightforward, but again, if we can keep them to look symmetrical, unless the city finds, or the council or the city staff finds that the just cause GHIRJ are, have a particular different priority than, say, the renewal of the leases, and then we could kind of work accordingly.
Well, I think, going back to the discussion that the council had and the meetings that they had, I think they, at that time, they did feel there is a difference between moving someone out under just cause eviction for these two particular categories that we've been discussing versus moving someone out because you've increased their rent above a certain percentage. And that's why they set a much different formula for those scenarios.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think, in my opinion, if you were to ask me, I don't think this scenario works for those others, this formula.
This one works for the others. Yeah, I don't think it does.
Yeah.
That's why I just want to make sure that we're not going to, I remember there was extensive discussion on how that other formula came into being, so last thing we want to do is tinker with that thing.
Six-hour meeting, so I'd have to go back to the tape.
You mean the one that till 3:00 AM?
Yes.
So, with regard to the relocation section, the comments that we heard generally were that the value seemed to be low and that the overall value should be revisited, and potentially, the recommendation from staff that is up here sounded like a good idea. There was a comment that maybe there should not be a different tiered system for qualified versus eligible, or a definition that separates out that the value should be the same across the board. And then there was a comment about sliding scale on, based on the size of the building. We'll look to see if there are any examples of that in how they've been handled.
If I may please add, let's try to please keep things as simple as possible.
Then lawyers would not earn a living.
I understand. I understand, but then the general public would not be confused. I'm part of the general public, and I'm really confused.
All right. So, with that, we've got one more discussion point at 7:50. I think we can knock it out in 10 minutes.
All right.
Because it seems simple on the staff perspective and has to do with banking.
So, we discussed banking last time, and it was a little bit complicated. Just a refresher, banking is when a landlord doesn't increase the rent one year. They have the opportunity to bank the amount that they did not increase and use it for the following year without triggering relocation. So, if you didn't use your 7%, you can use it next year without triggering relocation. You can increase it 14% without triggering relocation. Total bank can't exceed 21%, and you can't use more than 14% at any time. So, staff recommends changing this to a simpler formula of just if the landlord does not increase the rents for a 12-month period, in the following month, they can increase it up to 14% without triggering relocation. That's it. You don't bank it. It's just very simple. If you didn't use it one, the year before, you add it to the next year, and that's it. And if you don't use it, it's gone.
I, I think that the last six words of your paragraph resolves that whole thing, which is subject to the state restrictions of AB 1482. I don't think 1482 with, with the percentage of the CPI cap at 10%, I don't think you can ask for 14%. I'd fight that every day.
Right, you can ask for 10%.
You can ask for 10%, but, but the thing is, is you're capped at 10%.
Right.
I would fight that every day of the year. So, how can a landlord get up to 14%?
They can't, but you can go up to 10%.
Well, if they had a newer building that wasn't subject to 1482.
You're, oh, so you're talking about on the newer building?
I mean, I guess they're talking about, yeah, if...
Well, it applies everywhere because...
As if those are not subject to 1482, then they, then they could go 14%, I guess.
Well, 1482 goes back, what, 15 years?
Yeah.
I mean, the discussion of the current banking will allow you to do the same thing. You could still go up to 14%, but considering AB 1482, you can only go to 10. So, the current banking will still allow you to go up to 10%. This just makes it simpler. You don't save it year after year after year, just one time, whether you use it or not the following year, and so on. It's not something you can bank and then use it five years down the line.
I'm not very much in favor of not banking it, but again, I can't see rents really being raised by reasonable people more than that. However, I think that is, that, again, we are complicating things. Let's just keep things simple. One thing which I'm not really sure is whether, you know, when, when, maybe we could strictly say that you can raise rents only once a year. That is understandable. But what the market is, what the conditions are, what the relationship is, what the rent amount is, that is all, and if a landlord hasn't increased rents for about three years, I don't see why he shouldn't at least have that peace of mind that, oh, you know, I have banked something I can use later. He may never use later because of all practically, because of all these other restrictions. But let's, again, let's not complicate things. Let's just, if that's, that's some kind of an advantage that a landlord feels they have, let them have it. Any way they cannot raise more than 10%, and any way they cannot raise more than one, once a year.
Right. Well, the reason we brought up the banking was the last time, I think some of you discussed that it was a little hard keeping track of year after year, how much you banked. So, we figured something much simpler like this might have...
Let's leave that calculation to the landlords. But again, last time, if I remember correctly, it wasn't as much as the percentage as the transferability of the banking to the new owner. That was the main question, not that, oh, shall we do it or not?
Right.
I think it was also the complexity of the calculation, and that's why we were trying to address that part of it. Certainly, again, this goes back to just a recommendation. It's a point of discussion, and maybe today is not the best day to discuss it. I can direct you to the section of the code where this is discussed, and that's under 9.30.033, having to do with banking. That's Section B. And, and again, when this was adopted, the, the state law wasn't in effect, and so that cap of 10% wasn't there. Ultimately, state law does cap it at a, at a certain amount. And so, perhaps part of the consideration should be that discussion, which is, you know, if you could go up to 10% and you've just go, if you've just done 5%, let's say, or 2% every year or not at all, then what is the overall value that a landlord can increase the rent? And so, maybe that's something that we all think about in preparation of our next meeting.
Yeah, I agree with Jennifer that, with what she was saying earlier, that if we're going to go ahead and, since we have AB 1482, really, we're talking about the last 15 years of construction with this concern. The simple resolution would be is that if the landlord hasn't used a rent increase in the past, because of a lower rent increase below 7%, that they could raise it, but in no event greater than what's set forth by state law, which is the 10%. I think, let's not create a new homework assignment for us when we really don't need one here. I think this could very easily be dumbed down, and with AB 1482 in place right now, it's, I think it solves the problem for us. Yeah. Well, 14 is for buildings less than 15 years old. Yeah, no, let them do the calculation because you're going to be dealing with...
I'm doing the 14.
You can still, you still can.
Yeah, the conversation, the conversation needs to be on the record, so with the mic and...
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No sidebars, please.
Yeah.
No sidebars.
No sidebars, right, no.
I think we should study this further before...
Because state law doesn't cap 10% for newer buildings that are within the last 15 years. That's why the city protection of some banking limitation would help with those newer buildings.
Yeah, and I think we understand that comment.
The, if you look at Section C, it says this section shall not apply and a relocation fee shall not be required to be paid pursuant to the, to any rental unit that received a certificate of occupancy after February 1, 1995. So, the banking doesn't apply to newer buildings.
But this is...
I think that was Costa-Hawkins, though.
Exactly.
That was different.
Costa-Hawkins.
Right.
This is not congruent with the current state of the state law.
Right, and that's why I think we need to take a closer look at...
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
B and C and...
Well, okay, so with...
We did have, we did have one last section on enforcement procedures. Seepon, did you want to jump to that very quickly? Because we have three minutes.
Ms. Varpetian, on the last item, can we include something, though, that does say that the rights of banking can be assigned or transferred between owners, just a simple blurb? Because I've had that question come up several times.
Oh, we don't really have any suggestions on the last.
Okay, so that's something that we can bring back as well.
So, that was a good discussion, and I think there are things that we can take back in the office, look at some alternatives, and then bring it back at a future meeting. And again, if, if between now and the next meeting, any of the commissioners have a comment on another element of the rental rights program you would like us to bring back, to let us know, please. There is one more item on the Agenda 5C, and that's simply looking at the calendar for next month. No?
I don't have the PowerPoint.
Oh, you don't have PowerPoint. So, we do have a meeting scheduled for next month, but unfortunately, both Ms. Varpetian and myself will not be here for that meeting, and we want...
Sorry, next month, you mean June.
I'm sorry, June. Yes, thank you. At the end of June, Ms. Varpetian and I won't be available for that meeting, and we wanted to know whether or not the commission wanted to just default to the regular July scheduled meeting, or would you like to, which is at the end of July, or would you like to have two meetings in July to make up for this? Or simply add this meeting on at the end of the, or 12 months?
I'm going to be out of the country on, in, for the July meeting. So, my preference would be not to be away from these exciting discussions for three months. So, the bottom line is, my preference is, if we can. I'm not quite sure what are the dates that Ms. Varpetian and Mr. Zovek will be unavailable, but if we can accommodate that, that would be great. Thank you.
I think maybe what we would like to hear is whether or not you all will be here in the first part of July, mostly because it isn't so much our availability, but this room's availability. All of our meetings have to be televised, and so it's, it's a juggling act, especially in the summers with commissions trying to reschedule and move meetings around. So, are you all here in the first two weeks of July?
I'm leaving July 11th and returning August 19th.
Wow, okay.
Yes.
So, everyone else here?
Yeah, sure.
If we can find, if we can find a date, I think, in that first week, 10 days of July, then we will probably do a similar email notice to you all. We would need to find room for it. That's our concern, so...
One thing I really will appreciate, and it will really suit me, is if we combine the July and August meetings for first week of July, and then not hold a meeting in July, and then the next regular meeting will be the fourth week of August. And personally speaking...
More confusion.
More confusion.
We'll do our best.
Personally speaking, that would really fit my travel plans, but I don't want to screw up everything else just because of that.
Let's take 1 month at a time. If we can move the July meeting up, then we'll try to...
So, July meeting, the first week of July.
Sorry.
Will you be back by July 11, before July 11?
Yes, I'd be back by the 4th.
We'll try to pick some time between July 4th and the 11th, where the room's available.
So, is the intent that we would have a makeup meeting at the first or second week of July, before, sometime before July 11th, and then our regular scheduled meeting at the end of July?
No, at the, at August.
Simply default then to August.
And we can discuss that again at the July meeting.
The end meeting in June?
So, the end meeting in June will not occur. It would be instead, we'll move it to July, yeah.
Okay.
And...
Wouldn't it be just more simpler, just to skip July, and then, or skip this June, end of June meeting, and then just add a meeting at the end, instead of doing a juggling act?
I think we're hearing that somebody's not going to...
But still, July would be there. We are trying to combine the June and July meetings for first week of July...
Right.
So that your, your, truly will be there.
Skip the July meeting and combine it with the June meeting?
So, just have one meeting at the beginning of July, instead of the June. And then the June... We would have to look.
You're combining the 2 meetings?
Yeah. I mean, certainly, we'll, we'll try to make sure that all of the items that need to be discussed are discussed. I mean, we won't, the, the discussion won't suffer because of the time change.
Okay.
And then is the 5:30 time slot okay?
For a special meeting?
Or generally speaking.
Well, we can only shift the special meeting, so if this time, if our start time was okay with everyone, then...
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. All right. So, with that, then, we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is committee and staff comments. The only comment from staff is that we unfortunately have lost our facilitator, and so we are currently searching on hiring a new facilitator for the committee, and when we do, we'll bring that person on, we'll let you know. Another staff.
You were doing fine today. Did, did, do we need one?
I don't know. We'll, we'll talk about that, then, and see. Any, any committee comments? Committee member comments?
I agree. I thought, I'm not sure we necessarily need one, but...
I think Mr. Zovek did a fine job, yeah.
Yes, he did.
Maybe we'll reconsider that. We'll see. We'll, we'll certainly speak with the city manager's office on this. Item 7 is new business. We have none. Item 8 will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned at...
Aren't we voting on this?
8:04.
Somebody might want to stay, somebody might want to stay here.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.